Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Today is April 23rd, 2024. I'll call the North Liberty City Council Meeting to order. Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Bible?
Here.
Park? Sidig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes to what's in front of you. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is our consent agenda. Is there anything on there that you want to talk about separately? Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is public comment time. This is a time for anyone in the audience to make comment on items that don't have public comment attached to them or are not on our agenda. If you would like to make any comment. I'll open the public comment section. Did you want to make a comment?
The tax is not tonight, so, you know.
Okay. Are there any other members of the audience for public comment? I'll close the public comment section then. Josiah, item six is our engineer's report, please.
Thank you. Construction updates. I'll start off with West Penn Street. So, West Penn Street is underway. The road is closed. The intersection with James Avenue is still open. So, you can go north, south on James out in the county. Traffic control signage is up. Detour routes are signed. It's a long detour route, but that's all going around through Tiffin and back up through North Liberty. The work has gone well so far. They've got all the pavement removals done in the first section, and they're grading, and they've got storm structures in and everything. So, so far, so good on that one. The next one is Fox Run Pond Trail. Just a quick update. We had the pre-construction meeting with the contractor onsite with Guy Goldsmith, and they are going to get started in June on that project and looking to get done wrap-up around August. And that's important because Guy's, Guy's staff is going to put in their playground equipment out there at that park. So, he's got that coming and planning for an August install, and the contractor's planning to be ready for him at that time. So, it should work out well. Streets and maintenance facility also going well. The floor slab on the upper level is complete, and now they're doing steel stud framing work, rough ends for electrical plumbing and on track. Nothing too new on City Hall, obviously, at the move-in day, but there will be, there will be ongoing work for the next couple of weeks inside and outside the building. That's it.
Thank you, Josiah. Are there any questions? All right. Ryan, item seven is all yours, please.
Couple of big dates this week. First, tomorrow, as you all know, we are moving into the new City Hall. So, the plan, which is, seems to be working out well so far, is that we've started moving some folks over. Tomorrow, City Hall will be closed all day in an effort to finalize that move and then open for business at the new location Thursday morning at 7:00. As Josiah said, they're still finishing up a fair amount of the landscape, so there'll be some, some work being done outside, and then some minor issues that hopefully won't interrupt us too much inside. And then hopefully here in the next few weeks, that'll all be wrapped up. On Saturday of this week is our annual cleanup day down at the street, our Public Works Campus. So, we'll ask people to, to bring in their, I guess, junk or whatever they, they'd like to bring in, and that starts at 7:00, right? And will end by 11:30, I believe. Or at 11:00? Excuse me, 11:00. That's usually a very busy day down there, so we hope people will continue to take advantage of that. We, we have a third week, or excuse me, a fifth week in April, so our next city council meeting is three weeks from now. Bring that up because we are also planning to have our open house on that May 14th. More information will be coming out about that. But again, we'll have, the plan is to have that open house prior to the start of our first meeting in May. And then lastly, I mentioned this at the last meeting as well, there, I believe that there was a, a post that, that went out today about our new stormwater rates. Those will be on this month's bill. So, folks should be, should be looking for those, and certainly if they have questions, encouraged to call City Hall, although not tomorrow, Thursday preferably or after. And that's what I have this evening. Marinerless, are any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ryan?
Do, is there any proof of residency needed for cleanup day when they pull in?
Yes.
Very good.
Driver's license, utility bill.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm the gatekeeper.
If they know Brent, does that help?
Nope.
No.
That might hurt them, actually.
Don't say that. You'll get turned away.
If Brent's in the car with them, that would help, I guess.
It's all of Brent's stuff.
Thank you. Mayor's report, just a couple of things. I'll start with the Arbor Day proclamation. This is pretty cool. We get to do this, this has been a lot of years doing this. Whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas the city of North Liberty has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting practices, and whereas each year Arbor Day is observed by the people of North Liberty, Iowa, with special attention paid to the care and planting of trees, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore be it resolved that we, the city of North Liberty, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2024, to be Arbor Day in North Liberty, Iowa, and encourage all North Liberty citizens to participate in tree planting and nurture, protect, and wisely use Iowa's natural wonder of trees, so that we will ensure a more beautiful city and state promoting the well-being of this and future generations. Couple of other notes. Personally, last Tuesday, I had a chance to meet with the eighth grade class from Heritage Christian School. We met at the new City Hall, walked around. Thankfully, everything was cool in there, and we were able to have a good discussion. They had a, actually had a class project that I was able to help them out with. So, thanks to Mr. Ellerly and for him bringing that class over. As we've talked about already, this is going to be the last meeting that we have here, and I, just a couple of things I wanted to, to say about that. First of all, these accommodations were not intended to be as long as they were, but I wanted to thank Steve Upli for all of that time over, what, 12 years that we've been in here. The accommodations he made for us then, and all of the work that our city staff put into making council chambers and this entire complex, something that served to meet the needs of this growing city. And I'll again say that a lot of people that work here now at the city and in the past put some sweat equity into this space that we're in, into this facility, so I wanted to thank them. And finally, I like to do math every once in a while. I'm not very good at it, but I, in the time that we've been in this council chambers, there have been about 15 city council members that have sat in these seats up here and five mayors. So, we got a lot of, not a lot of time in here, in this space. So, anyway, I'll stop blabbering on that. Move on to you guys. Anything that you've been doing in the last few weeks on behalf of the city?
I can start, Mayor. Just wanted to mention, I attended, I think, with a number of other folks here at the Hurky on Parade event last Tuesday. Just wanted to say thank you to the Courtyard by Marriott for hosting that and all the effort that went into putting that together. It was a very nice event. I'm excited for the rollout here soon, not only in North Liberty, but the surrounding community for all the hurkeys that we'll see. So, again, as an Iowa alum, love to see the, the attention with the University of Iowa. So, and then I did want to take this opportunity. Tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day, and I wanted to formally recognize the tremendous amount of work that our staff does. Without their efforts, our city and this council wouldn't run as efficiently, as effectively as it does. So, I just wanted to share my sincere appreciation to those folks and say thank you. So, that's about it for me.
Thanks, Brian. Can you remind us, do you know when the Hurky on Parade kicks off? Is it May 10th? I've got that date in my mind.
I thought it was May 1, but I.
May 1st.
May 1st, yeah.
Awesome. Anything else?
No, thank you. Mayor, I attended the Think Iowa City Board of Directors meeting. I want to highlight that the Grand Gable, 100-mile, 50-mile, 25-mile, there's, you have three options, bike ride, is being hosted here in town at Field Day Brewery. So, that'll be May 4th. They anticipate over 600 bike riders here in town that day, so excited to have that. Thank you to Think Iowa City and Grand Gable Planning Committee for choosing North Liberty as your place to host your event. You can register at grand, G-R-A-N, gable.com. And then I'd like to also congratulate our colleague, Mr. Paul Park, on his nuptials this week. Congratulations to, to him and his new family.
Anything else, guys?
I attended the North Liberty Lunch Connections on the 10th. Yeah, 10th. That was after our last meeting, right? At Ondelay, that was a nice gathering, and I also attended the Hurky on Parade Open House, and I'm, I'm kind of stoked for those to come out. There's some really good designs.
Thank you, and thanks for going to that luncheon. Anything else? All right. Move on to item number 10, and this is a presentation regarding proposed new facility. Ryan, you are up.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Boops. I'm the Executive Director at the North Liberty Community Pantry, and on behalf of the pantry, thank you for having us tonight to discuss our new facility. I come before the council to respectfully request your help in having us never turn away a food donation. So, in the handout that I prepared and provided, you can see the growth that we have seen since 2021. So, in 2023, we serve 930 families, almost three-quarters of those residents of North Liberty. That represents a 69% increase in just a two-year time period. We did 1,338 grocery deliveries, a 593% increase in just a two-year time period. We distributed 37,719 items of clothing, which was a 454% increase in just a two-year time period. And finally, we distributed 588,000 pounds of food, which was 103% increase in just a two-year time period. So, the need in the community has never been greater, and unfortunately, we see that need continuing to rise. Coupling that with some of the pictures that I shared, that you can see on the top left is a picture of our freezer space with just the door open, that you cannot walk into the freezer because we have to have so much food to distribute. It's only 370 cubic feet, and it is stuffed to the max. All of that food, we estimate to be distributed within four weeks' time before we start cycling things over, so it does not collect dust where we are. Our warehouse on the bottom left has pallets in the aisleways because we have nowhere else to store food. And then in January, we used what we lovingly call the Midwest Refrigerator. When it is cold enough, we stack food that needs to be refrigerated on pallets outside while we wait for families to shop so that we can restock. But this is all a result of having a lack of space. So, because of that growing demand and the limited space we currently have, we are looking at a project to build a sufficient, sufficient space, and that project is slated to be at 350 West Penn. We have submitted a site plan to the city for feedback, and it's working its way through that process. Our hope is to have somewhere around a 10,500-square-foot building, which is a little over three times bigger than the space we have now. So, our intention is to meet the needs of families today and also in the future. The site plan is intended to fit within our core values of believing everyone has the right to be free from hunger, believing everyone has the right to be treated with dignity and respect, and believing everyone has the right to self-determination and choosing what they need. So, our intention is to grow in conjunction with those core values. What our request is from the city is $100,000 commitment for financial support for this campaign, as well as developing access from the bike trail that ends at Penn Street. We have a number of families that walk and bike to access, and actually, the bike trail is perfect setting for us for improving access for families that lack a vehicle but could safely walk on the bike trail to where we're at. So, the total project cost is on there, but Eric and I got some new information today, so that number may be different. Not in the best way, but different. So, we are looking forward to the leadership of the city of North Liberty with the potential to be the first major gift in our campaign and kicking this off strong. Any questions?
I don't. Thanks for the tour last week.
Yeah. Happy to have you.
You guys have any questions for Ryan? You've all been in the pantry. You know what we're dealing with over there, so.
Mayor, not for Ryan, but for city. So, part of the agreement would be the development of bike trail. Do we have, Josiah, do we have any idea on what the projected cost of that agreement would be? Have we looked at that yet?
I would say, I would say no. I mean, we just looked at a pre-submital and offered some comments and thoughts and like, where, where could this work? So, that's all we're at right now.
Okay.
I think that, my thought on the agreement, it would be that, at least initially, if this council is amenable to, to supporting the project, the agreement would mainly focus on the $100,000, and then we would come back later after we were further along in design to talk about what the costs are going to be for, for the crossing. It's just too early. We just don't have enough data yet to, as Josiah just said, to have a number on that. We could bring an agreement back as early as May 14th if the group wants to make a commitment to the pantry somewhat soon.
So, the, I guess I'll share my reason behind that, Mayor. Having a, having an understanding of what that concrete or, or what that extension might cost, I would be in favor with the ARPA funds and seeing where we are with the ARPA funds to pledge $150,000 to the project dependent upon what the cost would be for the trail. I'm more apt to give a little more than what they're asking for two reasons. One, the total project cost of $3 million and what the percentage of the city ask is, and two, knowing that they will be out soliciting donations similarly in the way that we have to similar donors for Centennial Park, knowing that, how difficult that is. We have a, a community that is very giving and has done so in the past, but that's my reason behind that ask.
Okay. We're not at a point for action, but we do need to provide some guidance, I suppose, for the next council meeting?
Yeah, and I, I think the, what I would offer to Counselor Smith and the group is that after we know what the cost is for the, the bike path or whatever we're doing there, we could, if it's less than what we thought or whatever it is, we can always come back and say we have some additional ARPA money. My concern doing that upfront is we have no idea what this can cost. Sure. Given the type parameters there, you know, if it was up to Russ, we'd put a tunnel in, but that. But I, I'm, I am mildly concerned about what those costs could be.
Okay. That's fair.
So, we, okay, keep any separate? Brent? Okay.
I would agree.
Okay. And is $100,000 still a number that we want to stick with? Okay.
So, just a quick question. What's going to happen to the existing facilities?
Excellent question. So, the, the First United Methodist Church of North Liberty owns the buildings that we currently operate out of, and we're actually going to be working with our board and church members to work on a plan for now, and then also what they will choose to do with those buildings after we've moved.
Did, did we put any conditions on the freezer?
I don't.
I don't think there were any conditions on the freezer.
Okay, just to make sure.
I know that the city contributed the walk-in freezer.
Yes. Yes. And at the time, that worked for the needs.
Yep. I just need to make sure it wasn't like, oh, we have to.
Would you like a freezer back? Is that what you're asking?
No, I do not.
I don't have anywhere for a freezer. I can guarantee that.
Keep stuff for the museum and, never mind.
I'm really appreciative of the information in here. I'm just curious. I didn't see it, and if I had, I missed. I apologize. Do you have timeframes on when starting and like completion, looking out, projecting, you know, when you look at cost and need and all those types of things?
Yeah, excellent question. So, our hope is to close on the property April 26th, and I have to thank Eric Sidig for all of his efforts on that. It's not been an easy task and taken a lot of his time, so very thankful for that. So, once closing happens, then in, in conjunction, working with the city on finalizing a site plan, so we have to get a few more renderings and elevations submitted for feedback, we're told that that could be perhaps another four weeks, and following a construction plan, another two weeks. So, I would say at the earliest, site preparation on the actual site would start as early as June, and then we're told that it's approximately a six-month build as soon as we start construction. So, our intention is to try to move as safely and quickly as possible. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think what I, heads nodding, and Eric, I know that you can't participate. We're good with the $100,000. Bring that back into the conversation on May 14th. Okay. Do you need anything else?
Well, I did just look up that resolution. This goes all the way back to 2012.
Good.
Speaking of which.
It says that the city would contribute $15,000 specifically for, for the purchase of a walk-in freezer, and with the understanding that if the pantry moves or closes in the future, the freezer will move with the pantry or be returned to the city. So, I'll talk to, I mean, I suspect the value of that freezer at this point is limited. So, Grant and I will talk about that and determine what we need to, to do to.
Close that loop, yeah.
Yeah.
You could put a blue posty note on it.
Tracy's the gatekeeper this weekend, and so.
If we come with a freezer, we still need it for a little longer at least.
All right. We won't get rid of it just. Any other Downing, Downer news that you, sad news to report to us?
Nothing yet for this item.
Right now? Okay, good.
Give me a minute.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to quickly close this item agenda, agenda, and move on to item number 11.
Thank you.
If that's okay. Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
And this is for Northridge, Part Four, rezoning. Item A is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience here for, in the public wishing to make comment on this? You'll be up next, Mr. Downer. Just give me one second, but I don't think anybody is in the public. Terry? No? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Item B now is staff and commission recommendations. Russ, or I'm sorry, Ryan, do you have some comments here?
Russ wanted me to just remind the group that we did send this out to more people than within the 200-foot radius, which is required. So, the folks in the fjords gathered, we didn't, we had not received any, any public comment on it. As noted in the, in the packet, this is a two-lot subdivision that will have a shared access to North Liberty Road. Larger residential lots and the staff and the commission recommended approval.
Thank you. Okay. Item C is applicant presence. Hey, Mr. Downer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Bob Downer. I'm here on behalf of Scanlon family, the owner of the property that is under consideration here. Just a couple of additional comments with respect to it. There is a, a natural separation of this property from the other property that lies to the east and north, from the intersection of Oak Lane and North Liberty Road. This area will not be connected with the remaining property at such point as that might be developed. There's a restriction in the agreement that the Scanlons reached with the Fjords North HOA a year or two ago to the effect that there would be no access to this property lying north of Oak Lane from Oak Lane. And also, the way that it's proposed to lay out this two-lot subdivision, there would not be further access into the, the property lying to the east of the subdivision from those two lots. And feel that this is a, a good use for this particular property. It's somewhat unique and isolated because of the topography, and I think this is a use that will not place any burden on public services or the roads, but will provide a nice addition to the city of North Liberty. Be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Downer? I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Item D then is first consideration of ordinance number 2024-03, and this is first consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from ID interim development district to RS4 single-unit residence district. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Bible?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sidig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12 is Centennial Park Event Complex Phase One, and item A is public hearing regarding proposed plans, specifications, and estimate of cost. I'll open the public hearing. Seeing now, I'll close the public hearing. Item B is Resolution Number 2024-41, a resolution finally approving and confirming plans, specifications, and estimate of cost for the Centennial Park Event Complex Project Phase One. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions on what you've seen so far? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
I'm sorry. Did I miss something?
No.
You sure?
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay. It's all right.
Apologies.
Sorry. Tracy, roll call, please.
We'll start over. I apologize. Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Bible?
Aye.
Sidig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13 is the Green Belt Trail Subdivision, and item A is Resolution Number 2024-42, a resolution approving the developer's agreement for Green Belt Trail Subdivision Part Three, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
I moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions about this? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Sidig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bible?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 2024-43, a resolution approving the developer's agreement for Green Belt Trail Subdivision Part Four, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions about this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Bible?
Aye.
Sidig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is Seat Same-Day On-Demand Transit Services, and item A is Resolution Number 2024-44, a resolution approving the contract for same-day on-demand transit services between Johnson County Seats and the city of North Liberty. Ryan, could you do just a quick explanation on this before I?
Sure. This is a service that we currently utilize, and now, assuming funding continues at the, at the county level, or they continue to have funding for this, will run through, I believe it's September of 2024, so through September of this year. So they're, through September of this year, this is, this same agreement we've had, just updating the dates. We now know the end time of this program.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions for Ryan? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Bible?
Aye.
Sidig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 is the FY '25 budget. And item A is Resolution Number 2024-45, a resolution setting the time and place for a public hearing for the purpose of considering the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions about this?
Would you mind if I provide just?
Please do. That'd be great.
As you all know, we should have been voting on the budget this evening. However, we were informed early last week by the Cedar Rapids Gazette that they failed to publish our budget notice on time. Other than having a special meeting, our options were a couple. We could have a special meeting or request an extension. We immediately contacted the state and they said there's absolutely no issue with requesting an extension in this case. The, the events were out of our control. That's what we did to avoid getting the group together for, would be a fourth time this month. So this, the budget hearing and ultimately consideration of the budget will be at the May 14th meeting in, in the new city hall. That notice, I don't know if it's been published yet, but.
It can't be published till after this is approved.
That's right. So will be published after this. Of course, we'll keep an eye out for it. We've had pretty good success with the Gazette over the last couple of years. Just happened to be a mistake they made. We, we're reminiscing a bit. This happened a number of years ago with the North Liberty leader as well. This probably better than 10 years ago, maybe?
They all run together, so I don't know.
It was a while ago, but these things do happen, unfortunately. But we've take, we've taken the corrective action here. We've been in consultation with the state, so it'll be fine.
With that, any questions? All right, Tracy, roll call, please.
Sidig?
Aye.
Bible?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.[1729.83]